Okay, okay. Well then.
Thank you. One, um, we're gonna, we're gonna get started just as soon as we can. There's a train.
He's got it.
Um, and, uh, we're gonna let the train pass and some folks, um, uh, get here. So as soon as traffic starts moving again, um, and the rest of our council shows up, uh, we'll get started. So thanks for your patience.
In the meantime, Jay will enter, entertain us with a song and a dance.
I will entertain with a terrific dance.
The city council, terrific dance.
Alderman Purte.
City of 311.
Now, take to the Savannah City Council player.
Mr. Clerk, please call it over.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Van Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem in District Five Alderwoman, Dr. Estella Edward Shabazz.
Present.
Chairman in District Four Alderman, Nick Palumbo.
Present.
Vice Chairman and District Three Alderwoman, Linda Wilder-Bryan.
Let's go.
Alderwoman Post One at Large Carolyn H. Bell.
Present.
Post Two Alderwoman at Large Alderwoman Alicia Miller-Blakely.
Present.
Alderwoman Bernetta Lanier. Alderman of the Second District Dietrich Leggett.
Here.
And District Six Alderman Curtis Purte.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All rise. I call this meeting of the Savannah City Council to order today is February the 13th. As a reminder, for those of you that have to take care of business before tomorrow, uh, go ahead and take care of your business now. We want, we want, we want love and, and our lovely city on Love Day, so take care of that. Uh, and we thank all of you for joining us not only here within our temporary home, but also across our, um, social media networks and of course our award-winning SGTV. Savannah will be a safe, environmentally healthy, and economically thriving community for all. Uh, today's invoker will be introduced, uh, by Third District Alderwoman Linda Wilder-Bryan.
Good afternoon, everybody. Pastor Timothy Shepherd was going to be my, uh, person today, but he got stuck by the train, and I was just gonna say Jesus, whoop. I'm not gonna introduce Dietrich because you already know him and he's gonna be our invoker today. Thank you so much.
I got caught by the same train, so he might be coming through the door, so.
I did too.
Let's pray, Lord, do something about the train.
Yes, it is.
Can I get an amen?
Amen.
And that is the devotion. We wanna thank everybody for being here today. We wanna thank you all for the opportunity to stand before each and every one of us. So, um, I just want everyone to know that, uh, biblically, that small things are all, they do have a large impact. And if you don't think so, try to spend the night, one night with a mosquito. And you wonder what that mosquito would do to you? Just try to go to sleep and wake up with all the knots and bumps and how uncomfortable it'd be. That's how it is for us at City Council. We are small body, but we take care of a large city. So for us to be the small mosquitoes, we go around the city and we make a large impact throughout the city, and we not do it for ourselves or for the gratification of ourselves. But we do it not only for God, but we do it for you because we love you and we care about what our city is. So we thank you for this opportunity for allowing us to be before you and let us pray. Most heavenly and gracious Father, we come to you, God, and we thank you for being our hedge. Lord, the hedge of protection that, that protects us throughout the night and guides us through the day. Lord, I ask you, Father, to continue to bless us and keep us, Lord, not the least of us, but Father, for all of us. Lord, I ask you, Fathers, for all of those that do not know you, Father, you said that you would make us fishes of men if we follow you. But right now, God, I ask you, Father, to reach your hand out into the darkness of this community and turn the light on for those that don't know you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen?
Amen.
Thank you very much. Honor our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor, to see. Thank you all so much. Um, I understand I have a proclamation to present, uh, declaring February the 21st, 2025 is annual Arbor Day. Um, I do not have the proclamation, but I'll present it.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead.
I would like to, uh, get our meeting started with our first item and make an emotion for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for February the 13th, 2025.
Second.
They're probably moved to second it that, uh, we adopt the regular meeting agenda for February 13th, 2025. You heard the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for item number two on our agenda, for the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on February the 4th, 2025, uh, postponed, rescheduled from January 23rd, 2025 at 10 o'clock AM. Second.
They're probably moved to second it that we approve the minutes from the, for the regular meeting held on February the 4th, 2025, uh, which was postponed or rescheduled from January the 23rd, 2025 at 10 a.m. You've heard the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I'm gonna move forward to, uh, add, uh, that last, our last meeting, February the 4th. The council had a executive session to deal with items related to litigation. Um, our discussion was limited to that item, and no votes were taken to that meeting. I entertain a motion, uh, to, um, document that fact.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Probably moved to second it, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Y'all come on up. Um, we always look forward to Arbor Day. It is an annual observance for us. We, uh, I've been told, I've been told that we have one of the largest tree catapuses. Uh, some count Alderman Palumbo, 80,000 or so trees that we have here, uh, in this city. I'm sure you have a more exact number. Um, but trees makes us who we are. We are a Tree City USA, uh, and we take great pride in that. And so Arbor Day is a great opportunity, not only to educate some of us older ones, but I'll get our younger folks also engaged in appreciating, um, what trees mean to our city. If you ever want to raise a stir in this city, start talking about messing with a tree. It gets, it gets kinda dangerous around here.
Yes, it is.
Some places is whales, here is trees. Um, and so we're so glad to be here to have that proclamation. I'm sure, uh, it is somewhere, and I'm sure I've declared it, so, um, witness wherever, I've set my hand and caused the seal, uh, the City of Savannah to be affixed, declaring, uh, February the 21st, 2021 as annual Arbor Day and tree planting celebration, uh, in the city of Savannah.
Oh, thank you very much. My name's Randy Tate. I'm the Chair of the Park and Tree Commission, and very honored to be that. And, uh, we will be planting a tree at Haven Elementary School on the 21st, a fringe tree, and, um, come join us, uh, please, and it's always fun to see what the students come up with. And, uh, I agree that trees are extremely important to Savannah, and, uh, it's why I've been on the commission for seven years, to try to work to help bring more trees, and we need to keep planting more. And lots of new trees have been going in. I've been noticing just recently along Skidaway and other places, so thanks to the, uh, Park and Tree Department for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Gordon Denny. I'm the Senior Director of the City's Park and Tree Department. Um, as always, this is such a wonderful event, uh, to be part of a tree planting ceremony at elementary school. Um, we speak to a lot of the community, but being able to speak to the youth, uh, is a special time, so we do look forward to it, and we do invite you all out. Uh, we are glad to say, to date, we have planted 230 trees as of, starting in 2025. We'll be at 300 next week, and we'll be at 500 within the next four weeks. So we have met our mark within a three-month period, so.
Thank you very much. I have, now, I do have the proclamation now, um, but I cannot read this. Yeah, can we, can we try, give me some help, please?
Yes, his glasses.
You wanna read? Can you see it? Thank you. I got help. I still might need help. Whereas, uh, Savannah is America's most beautiful city, whose urban forest has more than 70,000 trees, which provide valuable shade to her parks, squares, roadways, and neighborhoods. Whereas the urban forest promotes the mystique and charm of Savannah as one of the most distinguishing and noteworthy features. Whereas, the urban forest increases property values, attracts visitors and future residents, and promotes economic growth and development in our community. And whereas the urban forest promotes community health by reducing stress and providing peaceful and serene settings, uh, and whereas high-quality street trees provide neighborhood cohesiveness and a sense of community. Whereas the urban forest reduces stormwater runoff, absorbs carbon dioxide and pollutants, and produces an abundance of clean, healthy air. And whereas the City of Savannah's been called the Forest City for more than 130 years, and has been designated as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation yearly since 1983. Now therefore, I, Van R. Johnson, the Second Mayor of the City of Savannah, do hereby proclaim Friday, February 21st, 2025, as Arbor Day in Savannah, and urge our citizens to ensure our urban forest legacy by protecting and preserving our trees. Again, a witness wherever I've set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Savannah to be affixed, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the city, thank you, and the Tree Commission for doing what you do, thank you, Mr. Denny, uh, and let's give them all a round of applause. Thank you. So this is the else, the other thing that's very, very, uh, anticipated. It is time for presentation of the Employee Engagement Team and recognition of the 2024 Fourth Quarter Employee of the Quarter winners. Uh, for us, this is our version of the Oscar Awards. This is highly competitive, it's highly secretive, um, coworkers turn against coworkers, friends turn against friends, uh, and the anticipation reaches a fever pitch as we wait to see who among us is the best of the best, who is the greatest public servant this quarter among great public servants. And even right now, here is Jay Melder conferring with Daphne Williams to make sure that they got it right, because it has to be right.
Right.
So. Are we ready? All right, come on, team, come on up, team, come on up, team, come on. My career's riding on this, so you gotta be right. And they're still conferring.
Y'all need more time to go back and... Okay. Mayor and Council.
Yeah.
It's that time again.
Running.
Let's give a, let's give a round of applause to our Employee Engagement Team. Phenomenal job. Listen, we acknowledge that employee morale is essential and ingredient in order to ensure the recognition and retention of great public servants who create productive and efficient organizations, and this is an organization full of great public servants. Recognition of employee achievement is a positive morale builder, a means to increase public awareness of employees' actions and contributions, and inspiration to others through increasing community service and awareness. Of course, each quarter, um, our employees choose among themselves, nominate and choose among themselves employees for each quarter, um, to recognize for their great public service. And of course, we also have an Employee of the Year, um, so stay tuned for that. Um, the Employee of the Quarter program, um, we will recognize one employee per, um, each service center. Each employee of the quarter, um, will receive a thousand-dollar reward, 24 hours of incentive leave, a certificate commemorating the occasion, and of course, all of the love and joy on our social media and websites that they can possibly stand. So, um, are we ready to announce the winners? We're ready? Okay. Are we gonna start with Community Services? Drum roll, please. Your Employee of the Quarter, Stacy Truesdale, from the Grants and Contracts Division. In 2024, Stacy distinguished herself as one of five city employees with the highest training hours, and notably, um, she was, uh, one of the only employees from Human Services to achieve this. Stacy's dedication to continuous training ensures she remains up to date with applicable laws, policies, and regulations, thereby minimizing risk and maintaining operational integrity with our city and especially our grants. Well done. Congratulations. Oh, and it's her work anniversary today. Great job. Okay, from Government Operations, your Employee of the Quarter is Terry Pousha from Fleet Maintenance Department. Terry has demonstrated hard work and dedication to enhance his skills for his position. This cross-training and determination to learn has made Terry a great multitasker. Terry has strived to enhance his training by studying, uh, material for the automotive service, excellent certificate, well done, Terry. Um, he's helped, um, and this has helped Terry gain a better understanding of the complex systems and vehicles, from the AC systems, air brake systems, and emission system. Cars are much more difficult to keep on the road than they used to be.
Oh, Terry.
But it's getting easier to locate Terry. Thank you. Congratulations. For Information and Public Affairs. Margaret Victoria Stripling Page from the Recorder's Court Department. Listen, Victoria has advanced Recorder's Court interpreter requests into a more robust system, since our interpreter request has quadrupled in the last few years. We went from having 52 requests five years ago to having over a thousand requests, uh, just last year. Victoria has taken on the load of scheduling all different types of interpreters for daily court schedules on top of other duties as assigned. We know how that goes. Victoria expresses her amazing creativity when she decorates Recorder's Court for employee parties, birthdays, and work anniversaries. So not only is she good for productivity, she's great for culture, and that's why you're Employee of the Quarter. Well done. Oh, yes. Okay, for Management Services, your Employee of the Quarter, Ashley Sullivan from Capital Projects Management. Over the last few months, Ashley has consistently gone above and beyond in her role, making a profound impact on both Capital Projects team and the success of several key projects. When her department faced a significant challenge with a sudden loss of three team members, I remember that, Ashley, you took an additional responsibility and worked tirelessly to ensure that a critical city project, the Gamble Building renovation, continued with little hiccups, um, and everything ran smoothly. A- Ashley doesn't just follow orders or go through the motions, she takes it upon herself, um, to make sure that our projects get delivered on time and on budget, and that's why you, Ashley, are Employee of the Quarter. For Planning and Economic Development.
Come on, yeah.
Your Employee of the Quarter, Shavaki Watson from Development Services. That's the energy, that's the energy Shavaki brings. Listen, her, Shavaki's contributions extend. Extend well beyond her core job responsibilities. She takes initiatives to create a welcoming and inclusive environment at the front-end service center, as you can see, using her own resources to maintain its appearance and celebrate each holiday in a way that reflects and honors the city's diverse community. Shavaki has stayed late on numerous occasions to help individuals complete essential documents required for permits, ensuring they receive the guidance they need to move their businesses and their projects forward. So thank you for making it easier to do business in the city. And making it fun to work for the city. That's why you, Shavaki, are Employee of the Quarter.
Go, Shavaki. Yes.
Okay, for your Savannah Fire Department.
Yes, it is.
Employee of the Quarter, Bud Boyce. Bud demonstrates the passion for Savannah Fire through participation in Camp Ignite, the Fire Explorer Program. Bud's participation in Camp Ignite has been pivotal to the success of the program, so, um, Bud can't be with us today, um, but, um, Bud led Camp Reignite, Savannah's Fires One-Day Program for Camp Ignite, campers to revisit firefighting and medical skills, as well as life skills and personal development. Um, Bud's a true firefighter, so well done, Bud. That's why you are Employee of the Quarter. Okay. For our Savannah Police Department. Employee of the Quarter, Sergeant Michael Kerr from the SPD Patrol Division. Amongst admirable qualities is his ability to inspire and support his team. He fosters an environment where personal and professional growth is not only encouraged, but actively supported. Uh, Sergeant Kerr identifies opportunities for officers to go through training and mentorship, ensuring the watch evolves to meet the community's ever-changing needs. And Sergeant, that is why you are Employee of the Quarter. Thank you so much for your leadership. And last, but not least, in our Water Resources Division. Roland Abbey, Water Supply and Engineering. Roland is the supervisor and takes this position very seriously. He creates an environment, um, in the workplace that makes it easy to perform your job, treating everyone with fairness and opportunity. He takes pride in his job working for the city, and he demonstrates excellence in his position as a supervisor. Dedication and accountability are his middle name. Nothing is ever too hard for Roland to tackle, and that's why you, sir, are Employee of the Quarter. Well done. Mayor and Council, one more hand again for your Employees of the Quarter. Employee Engagement Team and the wonderful work they do every day, making sure that not only are we good for the citizens, but we're good for each other.
And, and, and to Team Savannah, you can be Employee of the Quarter. What do you have to do, Jay?
Well, you have to be a rock star. You wanna talk a little bit about the Employee of the Quarter?
So our nominations are live, um, for this quarter, um, so there will be a flyer sent out. But if you don't mind, I would like to formally introduce our team. Um, so there is a, there's two representatives from each service center. Um, some of them cannot be with us today, but I'd like to just introduce them. So I am the Chair. My name's Christina Chandler. I'm from the Office of Human Resources. You all probably formerly know me as Jeff's Right Hand, but I'm now the Learning and Development Coordinator, so hello.
Cool girl.
Um, and my partner in Management Services is Mr. Frederick Scott Fields. So he's in the Office of the City Manager, and he's our, our Community Outreach Coordinator. Um, representing Government Operations is Christina Odom.
Christina.
And might add, she is the Subcommittee Chair, so she is the queen of this program. Employee of the Year, Employee of the Quarter. Um, she represents our Park and Tree Department as our Special Projects Coordinator. Um, and then she is out there serving Savannah, but, um, there is Majeska Pleasant Murray, so she is in Code Compliance as our Senior Code Compliance Officer. Um, representing Information and Public Affairs is Megan Kirkoff.
Megan, I see you, girl.
Another honorable queen. She is our Subcommittee Chair as well for Employee of the Year and Quarter. She represents, um, Municipal Archives as our Records Management Program Coordinator. Um, alongside her is Morris Frazier. Y'all probably know that name. He's in IT. I don't believe he's here today, um, but he is our Senior Network Technician. Um, for Planning and Economic Development, we have Ms. Weeta Blake. She's from our, um, Development Services Department as our Senior Admin Assistant. Um, representing Community Services is Jeffrey Parsons. He couldn't be here with us today, um, but he is in the Moses Jackson's Advancement Center as our Educational Specialist. And then we have, um, Melissa Williams. She's not here with us today either, but she, um, represents Recreation and Leisure Services as our Senior Services Activity Coordinator. Um, representing us in Water Resources is Stephanie Takanata.
Stephanie.
She is in the Chief's Office, um, as our Contract Coordinator. And then we have Colin Carvin. He is in Stormwater Management as our Construction Inspector. Representing Savannah Fire, um, they, neither of them could be with us today, but that's okay. Um, Brian Coyne, he is a Fire Captain, and Sabrina Jeffcoat, she's a Senior Management Analyst. And then last but not least, representing Savannah Police, um, here with us is Elizabeth Knight. She is our Police Property Coordinator. And then, um, Jared Lee. So again, he's out there in the streets serving hard. He's a sworn police officer, and that is our team.
We'll see you next quarter.
Thank you all so much again. For us, for, for, for us, um, thank, I, I appreciate this, and, uh, for us, we take the time because it's a poor frog doesn't praise its pollen. And so, uh, you all see us, but the fact is, the work is done by them. And so we're so proud of all of you. Thank you all so much. Thank you all so much, and I saw Jeff Grant as well. Thank you all for your work in recognizing and lifting up our team members. All right, let's, let's get to the meat of the agenda. We do have, yes?
You want to recognize Tim Shepherd? He is here.
He's here.
I made it, Tim.
Pastor Shepherd, come on up here. Now, we know because we got caught by the same train.
Oh, yes.
And you took the time and you still came anyway. So, yeah, he can say, there ain't nothing wrong with having two prayers. There's nothing wrong with you saying hello to us, so please, Pastor, you want to introduce him?
Oh, yes, of course.
That's my, that's my classmate.
Hold on, hold on, Shepherd. Let me go, let me go, let me go. Pastor Timothy Shepherd from Central Missionary Baptist Church of Thunderbolt, Georgia. Pastor Shepherd is a native of Savannah, Georgia. He is married to the former Gwendolyn Passmore, and they are the proud parents of two children, Tiffany and Gerald, and two grandsons, Braylon and Tyler. He is a 1979 graduate of Benedictine Military School, a 1983 graduate of Jacksonville University, where he earned a Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration, and a 1992 graduate of Savannah State, where he earned a Master's in Public Administration. He serves as the pastor of Central Missionary Baptist Church in Thunderbolt, where he is now in his 25th year of service. In addition to pastoring, he is a member of the Marine Association, an association of more than 50 churches, where he held the position of President of the Congress of Christian Education. He is a certified business Christian educator who always available to provide Christian instruction. He achieves other accolades, but only wants you to know that he loves and serves a mighty God. And he's also my community partner. He has a clothes closet. He feeds all of Thunderbolt. He, I've been knowing him for like 35 years, when he was a court administrator with Chatham County, and he is a beast, y'all. Thank you for coming. Thank you for showing up. I appreciate your service.
Thank you. Brother Mayor? You want to pray for us? We'll take another prayer. I mean, you, you pressed your way here. We're glad to have you.
Amen. Let us pray. Our gracious and eternal God, Father, we gather here from all over. We are here with different backgrounds, different beliefs, but for one purpose, to serve this present age. I ask you, dear God, to shower your blessing upon this council, upon all those who are here today, upon every member of the city of Savannah, who is served by this great group of people. We ask you, dear God, to allow your blessing to fall fresh. Decisions have to be made, and sometimes they are hard. But we ask that you allow the citizens of this community to have understanding, to realize that it's easy to criticize, but until you walked a mile in a man's shoes, you need to be careful how you talk about that man.
Amen.
We thank you for the leadership. We thank you for their willingness to serve. And Father, as we come to the close of this prayer, we never come to the close of giving you honor, praise, and worship for everything you do. Thank you, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you again, Pastor Shepherd, and I know I got there a little late last night, but I know Central Baptist Church was recognized in Thunderbolt for being a civil rights stalwart, particularly during Black History Month. But again, we've known you, you're Savannah bred, Savannah born, Savannah strong.
Yes, sir.
And want to thank you for all the work that you, you do and continue to do on behalf of the least, last, and lost in our community.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And you know you got to take a picture, right?
Of course you do.
Let's give him a round of applause again. Thank you so much. Let's move to alcohol license hearings, items number five through seven. Item number five is approval of a Class E beer and wine by the package alcohol license to Segai Saddest Van for Wheaton Market, convenience store located 1321 Wheaton Street, between Ash and Cedar in Alderman District Two. Item number six is approval of a Class C beer and wine by the drink alcohol license to Angel Santiago for L&amp;L Hawaiian Barbecue Restaurant located 318 Mall Boulevard Suite 800, located between Abicorne Street and House Memorial Drive in Alderman District Four. Item number seven is approval of a Class A wine caterer alcohol license to Tanya Renty for locally-made Savannah and Ice Cream Shop located 223 West Broughton Street, located between Jefferson and Barnet Street in Alderman District Two. This is a public hearing. Does anyone, anybody have anything to say against any of these licenses? Going once? Going twice?
Mayor Johnson, I have a question.
Speak now, forever hold thy peace. Is there a motion to close?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we close here.
Second.
They're probably moving to second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes, recognizing Alderman woman, Miller Blakely, for a question.
Yes. Mr. City Manager, is this the same ice cream shop that had the license on Broughton Street before, or is this a different one?
It's the same.
I believe it's the same one.
It's the same one? Okay, so their license expired and they are renewing it, or?
Is Ms. Jones here? If she can talk to the specifics of this license.
And this is item number seven?
Yes.
Revenue Department Senior Director Judy Jones.
Good afternoon, Council. Alderman, this is a request to add to the existing Class C wine license. She's adding a catering license to this license, to the existing license.
All right. Thank you.
All right, moving to item number five. This is Wheaton Market, a convenience store at 1321 Wheaton Street, Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I ask that we accept the Class E beer and wine by the package alcohol license to Segai of Wheaton, Wheaton Market in Alderman District Two.
Second.
Probably move to second, that we approve the Class C beer and wine by the package alcohol license for Wheaton Market, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number six, Alderman Palumbo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for the approval of a Class C beer and wine by the drink alcohol license to Angel Santiago for L&amp;L Hawaiian Barbecue.
Second.
Probably move to second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number seven, Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I ask that we approve the Class A wine caterer alcohol license to Tanya Ryan for locally-made Savannah and Ice Cream Shop in Alderman District Two.
Second.
And probably move to second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Go forth, be great. Item number eight is a public hearing regarding our ability to opt out the state's version of the homestead exemption pursuant to Official Code of Georgia 48-5-44.2. This is a part of a series of public hearings we're having regarding this matter. As you know, there has been a addition in state law of a statewide homestead exemption, and communities have the ability to opt in, opt out. Our position has been and remains that we have had since 1999, what has been known as the Stevens Day Bill, which is the gold standard in homestead exemptions. It has been the true tried and proven product, has withstood legal tests, administrative tests, has been modified to fit the changing needs of our community, and HB 581 was just catching everybody else up. There are communities across the state who have not had a homestead exemption at all, and so the state is trying to create an opportunity for other folks to have what we have. So if you have a public comment regarding this, we will receive those comments at this time. You will have two minutes after you indicate your name. This is not a dialogue. We're just receiving your public comment, and so we will do that, and I'll just ask that we will be cognizant of the time. Is anyone who wishes to give public comment? Going once? Going twice? You sure? All right. Did he fill out a card? Okay, we'll make sure he does.
Mayor, my name is Alderman, Representatives. Thank you for the opportunity. I want to speak in support, as the mayor has indicated, that from my readings of the laws, and it's very confusing to homeowners, we, speaking for the Edgemere Saksville neighborhood, several of my neighbors and myself, we support, as the mayor suggests, that what we have in Savannah is better than what is being offered to the, to the state. And so, again, speaking in support of Savannah taking the exemption. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Again, we're blessed here in the community, particularly when you look around the state, and for years, folks have been trying very hard, yes, ma'am, to, to get what we have. And so this has been the state's answer in doing it. They had to do it by statewide referendum, which is why we had to vote on it like everyone else, and it passed pretty well across the state, but we already had the best exemption. Yes, ma'am.
I concur with the gentleman. I'm pleased with what we have in Savannah, and I'd like it to stay that way. And I don't know if I should say this, I don't really trust the state.
Well, state your name for the regular police. Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am? We need you.
Go ahead, don't worry about your name.
We'll give you a code name.
Code name, green coat. That's good.
My name is Patricia Jenkins Spady.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you for that.
Brave, brave, brave.
All right, anyone else? Going once? Going twice? This hearing is closed. We will have a series of additional opportunities. Again, we want to make sure that we hear from all aspects of our community, but I think at the end of the day, and in the final analysis, the, we know what we have now, and we know that particularly with HB 581, and now even as we speak, there are amendments that are being floated to change 581 or add on to it. Folks are trying to get to where we are, and so I'm grateful that the Stevens Day Bill meets our needs, not only since 1999, but really going into the future. Thank you all very much. Yes, ma'am.
I move that we close the hearing.
Oh, I close. Fine. Probably move, thank you. Probably move to second that we close the hearing, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Meaning it's closed, hearing is closed. Zoning hearings, item number nine is a petition of Gary Gordon for a special use permit in the TC 1 Traditional Commercial 1 zoning district to allow for accessory alcohol sales, beer and wine in association with a restaurant, .12 acres at 1104 Southeast 36th Street in Alderman District Two. How you doing, Mr.?
Excellent. Pleasure to see you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I am Edward Morrow, the Director of Development Services and Current Planning at the Metropolitan Planning Commission. I'll speak to you very briefly today about two petitions. The first is a request essentially to establish accessory alcohol sales in association with a hot wing restaurant. It is my understanding that this is to be the second location for 520 wings. It's located at 1104 East 36th. If you can imagine the intersection of Waters and 37th, roughly, kind of in the Live Oak neighborhood. You can see on your screen in aerial view, there is actually a city facility just across the street. And you can see here just north of kind of the Daphen Park area in Live Oak. This is actually a photo of the restaurant. It is fully built, permitted, and I believe it's actually operational at this point, so today we're just talking about accessory alcohol sales in association with that principal restaurant use. You can see the future land use map and the zoning map.
One second, sir, one second.
Just going to let the song ride out. All right, so we can see the future land use map currently indicates traditional commercial, and the current zoning is also traditional commercial one, so this request is consistent with both of, both of our policy maps. We can see here the customer seating area. Customers would be able to be served by a walk-up window via a drive-through, or you can see there are a planned approximately 18 to 20 seats within the restaurant, where you could also be served. This was an adaptive reuse project where there was a bar tavern use that resided here previously, and so there was a small expansion to the space that you can see on the right side. The only thing that I'd like to add here, I'll say first that this site is fully permitted. It's built, it's operational. I just want to state that you can see that there was a drive-through that was added. There was originally a residence that sat on this parcel. And just for the record, I'd like to note that it might be advisable that there be a in-vehicle sort of waiting area or some sort of a queuing and stacking plan, just so that we're not seeing cars sort of hanging out in the right-of-way, just because, again, it is a very shallow parcel. Other than that, though, the staff and Planning Commission have both recommended approval of this, one condition, that the special use permit not be transferable. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, so was the issue dealing with stacking of vehicles, was that, is that a part of any recommendation you all have had, or?
No, that was a statement purely for the record. Again, this has been fully permitted, just to make sure that it doesn't become a nuisance.
The special use permit deals only with the ability to do alcohol sales. Traffic planning will happen at the, or has happened at the permitting stage, and we'll take that comment back.
All right, thank you very much. All right, this is a public hearing. Regarding this item, does anyone have any comments regarding this item? Okay. Has she filled out a card as well? Okay.
My name is Georgia Benton. I own the property at 1107, 1109 East 35th. I have also been a part of that particular section of the community since 1969. I remember when there in the shopping center, used to be a huge grocery store. This particular location, there used to be a lounge there. And between 34th, Waters and 34th, and Waters and 37th, there used to be a lot of lottery. And it took the city almost 20 years to get it to the status that it is now. Decent to walk through. Now, we don't need no more alcohol in that area, because if you go two blocks down to 34th Street, you already got a lounge there. Now, I understand business, but where the car's gonna be? You got to turn, if you're coming from Wheaton Street side, okay? You got to make a left turn. Okay? So therefore, you're creating a traffic problem. Not only are you gonna go back to congesting it with lottery, not lottery, lottery, you're gonna create traffic problems. So I don't know who didn't think this out thoroughly, but as a property owner, as a neighbor who been in the area, who know of that area, and I'm not being funny, but Dietrich Legend know exactly what I'm talking about. You all, like I said, took 20 years to get that a decent area. You put alcohol back there in any form or fashion, and you talking about a drive-through? No. Please let the community that you created to be decent, stay decent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benton. Any other comments regarding this particular special use permit?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Ma'am?
You know, when you get up in age, you forget stuff.
Ms. Benton?
Yes. And then too, you right across the street from a church, and you right down the street, one block from a daycare.
Ms. Benton, this is a restaurant, so it's a restaurant, and it meets the, it's not a club. It's a restaurant.
You talking about alcohol?
Right, but it's a restaurant. Mr. Manager, does it meet the legal distance requirements?
Well, it meets the legal requirements for this zoning, which is a special use permit, right? This is not an alcohol license. The alcohol license would come later because this sits in a district that requires a special use permit before they can even apply for an alcohol license. So if there were restrictions... So if there were restrictions for the proximity to churches or proximity to schools, and how that would impact their ability to sell spirits, then yes, that would impact the type of alcohol license that they could receive. This is simply, not simply, but this is the zoning to say that this parcel, it's appropriate for alcohol sales to be at this parcel. City Council would hear the alcohol license if that comes in the future.
Right. Which this is a necessary part to precede the
Yes, sir.
...application of alcohol license. All right, anything else on this? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Alderman.
Hey, sir.
I'm representing Second Island Baptist Church. We own the property 1112 Northeast 36th Street. It's a house there, and we're currently renting that house.
State your name for the record. Lee, Lee Conughey, please. Thank you.
Mr. Green.
Yes, yes. We feel that there's already sufficient alcohol and beverages in that neighborhood, and listen to what the lady just recently stated. It is no need for another place to serve beverages again. The neighborhood is trying to make an improvement, but if you add another place, then it's just gonna go back to what it used to be. There's a liquor store on 37th Street, a club on 34th Street, a store on 39th Street to sell alcohol and beverages. So why is there a need for another one within two blocks already have one already established? So we are saying that we should, that we do not approve of another license in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments regarding this item? Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Just for some clarity.
One second. Regarding a public hearing, the motion is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Probably move the second at all, in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir. Just for some clarity, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager, this is just to establish the, that it is, it can sustain a liquor license, but they have to come back before us again to obtain a liquor license, true?
Yes. The, yes, sir, that is true. In Nuza, or the last time that the zoning ordinance was updated, special use permits were created and expanded to limit certain uses or to ensure that more public scrutiny and process was provided for certain specific uses in certain specific zones. One of those uses in specific zones is alcohol use, especially in our traditional neighborhood and traditional commercial zones. So if you did not believe that this parcel or this zoning district specifically was appropriate for alcohol sales, you could deny this request for a special use permit, and the owner would not have the ability to apply for a license. If you felt like this parcel could be appropriate for alcohol use sales, then you could approve the special use request, and then the owner, the petitioner, would have the ability to apply for a liquor license and would have to go through that public process as well. So there are essentially, it adds another bite of the apple, so to speak, for City Council to hear public input on whether or not alcohol sales and what type of alcohol sales associated with a certain business at a certain parcel is appropriate for that community.
So it's appropriate for us, if we pass it today, to give an opportunity for public to weigh in when it's time for an alcohol license to be established?
It would be, yes. And because this special use permit, as Mr. Morrow said, one of the conditions on it is non-transferable, meaning that this zoning right, this entitlement to the ability to sell alcohol if you have an alcohol license, does not stay with the property. If it were to be sold, then that special use permit would be dissolved, and any new owner would have to come back for a special use permit as well as an alcohol license.
But after today, if we pass this today, they won't be able to sell alcohol?
No, sir. They would not be able to sell alcohol.
They will come back before us, and then
They would have the ability, yeah.
Whoever did not want to have this license can come back and
And Alderman Leggett, a word to the wise, if I was considering selling alcohol and I heard individuals coming up and having concerns, I would preemptively meet with them and try to reach a meeting of the minds before I apply for an alcohol license.
Right.
Again, it creates more space and more opportunities for communication. Today's just a zoning issue to deal with, so.
Okay.
Any other, yes, yes, ma'am?
Basically, that's what I was going to ask Alderman Leggett, if the owner, Gary Gordon, had any, has he had any communication with you? So then I guess he hasn't had any communication with the mayor. So I would agree with him that before they come back, I mean, if this is approved today, the zoning, that before they come back for the alcohol license, I would suggest that they have a meeting of the minds with the neighbors.
Okay. Okay.
I think that they will definitely have a meeting with the individuals that opposed what just hap, what is about to happen. Please, if you can, let the owner know that he needs to reach out. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, I'd like to agree with whatever the sitting Alderman has said, but I am for protecting communities. If it's on Broaden Street, if it's in a commercial development, then I'm good with that. But if anybody comes and says that they're against it, and then they haven't had a conversation with the owner, then I have a problem with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Again, this is not for a liquor license. This is for zoning, which must proceed. So there is the process of obtaining an alcohol license, which is a whole nother process all within itself. It is conceivable for council to approve a special use permit and not approve alcohol license. We're not required, Mr. Attorney, to approve alcohol license because we've approved a special use permit. All right. Anything else regarding this item? Their motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I make the motion that we approve the special use permit to establish accessory alcohol sales, beer and wine requests in association with the restaurant use in the TC 1 zoning district.
Second.
Probably move the second at all, in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to one. Thank you.
That part always.
Item number 10 is a petition of Ryan Williamson, agent for Strange Bird Savannah LLC, on behalf of Savannah Car drawing design, for a special use permit in the TC 1 Traditional Commercial zoning district to allow for accessory alcohol sales and distilled spirits in association with a restaurant for .29 acres in 1220 Barnard Street in Alderman District 2. Mr. Morrow?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I would like to point out, this is a similarly situated petition. However, this petitioner actually already has a special use permit. At the time, the use permit was truncated somewhat to allow beer and wine sales. They are back today to request specifically the addition of distilled spirit sales. So they are currently operating, as you're aware, there was a fire at this location, unfortunately. But it's a restaurant that is currently open, operating, and authorized to sell beer and wine. Today, we are just discussing distilled spirits.
Question, is this something that they want to pursue today? I mean, are they operational, or do they want to wait until they have? Because obviously, it puts it on the clock, so I don't know whether
It's our understanding that they did suffer fire damage, but that it's being addressed, and they're trying to get back open as soon as possible.
Good. Okay. All right, go ahead, continue.
Sure. We received an email from the owner saying to please proceed. The location just south of the park here, you could see the subject parcel again zoned TC, sorry, future land use map, traditional commercial, and the current zoning is TC 1, so consistent with both of our maps here. Just to show you what the location looks like, it is a place where you will definitely make a friend. It is an intimate environment, but the food is outstanding, so. The petitioner is requesting approval to sell distilled spirits. They received the original approval from MPC on July 25th and from City Council on August 24th. And so, this is a non-contributing structure that is within the Victorian local historic district owned by SCAD, operated by Strange Bird, so. You can see, originally when this came through, there were stipulations on hours. This is a business that proffered operating hours Monday through Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. It is leased, and it has 10 spaces within a lot that does provide other parking spaces, I believe, for SCAD. It operates two shifts according to the original application with four to six employees. There's an enclosed area to the rear of the property where the dumpster is placed, and this is still an accurate depiction of the configuration on the lot. And this is just an image of the existing special use permit. With that, the planning commission has recommended approval with the one condition that the permit be non-transferable, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing regarding this item, and we are glad that the fire was not career-ending, so we're glad no one was hurt. Any comments regarding this public hearing? Going once? Going twice? Mr. Mayor? Going two and a half times? Mr. Leggett?
I ask that we close the hearing.
Second.
Probably move the second at all, in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Leggett?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Morrow, is, could you tell me just how much substantial damage was to the building? Because from what I've seen, not only was the building damaged, but the food truck associated with the building also burnt.
Mr. Morrow, why, we have the petition here, why don't you come up and state your name for the record, please?
My name is David Mason. I'm the Director of Operations over at Strange Bird. Unfortunately, Ryan couldn't be here. It's still really early on, but we are definitely hoping to rebuild. Already started on the mitigation. They already have a fence all around the building to keep the area clean. I don't have a timeline, hoping for months to get back in there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would it be in the best interest of the petitioner to postpone this? Is it able to be postponed? Because if they, if we were gonna approve something that can't be opened, still under construction
I think that would be totally up to them. I mean, obviously, once it's approved, they could come back, and they would have to come back anyway at some point, so, I mean
Yeah, I mean, we're just hoping
It's within their business, I guess, you know, one end of it, hey, get this done, get out the way, since they'll be consumed with dealing with the fire mitigation and rebuilding process, so.
Absolutely.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
I have a question.
All right, one second. I have Alderman
I just want to make sure that the petitioner is not going to be requesting a prorated fees on the liquor license. All right, thank you, sir. Well, then it's up to you how you want to spend your money.
Is this the location that is directly across the street from the Black Rabbit on Henry and Barnard Street?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Their motion regarding this item?
10.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I ask that we approve the request for the special use permit to establish accessory sales for distilled spirits within the restaurant for the TC 1.
Second. And probably move the seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Y'all get to work. Get open, get open, get open. Thank you very much. Item number 11 is a first reading, which no item, no action is needed right now. This is to approve the amended updated fees outlined in Article Q, file taxicab ordinance consistency with the consumer index. And this is, they're seeking for us to amend updated fees outlined in Article Q for the contracts, which are managed primarily by mobility and parking services. The taxicab industries have not had an increase since 2019, so it's been a long time. So no, no action is required. Go to purchasing items, items number 12 through 16.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
One moment. Any pullouts? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Number 15, please.
Okay, pull 15.
I had a question on 15. If there are no more pullouts, I'd like to make a motion
Number 12.
For the approval of items number 13, 14, and 16.
Second.
Second.
And probably move the seconded, that we approve items number 13, 14, and 16. You've heard the motion, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes for purposes of record. Item number 13 was the authorized city manager to execute a contract for citywide flooring, local from Cover Rob Company, in amount not to exceed $133,125. Item number 14?
Yes, sir.
Is authorized city manager to execute a contract for city hall exterior lighting with Mosler LLC, DBA, founders maintenance restoration in amount not to exceed $90,146. We are moving forward, Mr. Manager, in fixing the people's house, and it is a loud, very active place every single day for those of us who live there, but it is coming along nicely. And want to thank city management team for that. And item number 16 was authorized city manager to execute a contract for engineering services with Hazen and Sawyer in amount of $671,400 for engineering services for phase-one design for the Georgetown Water Reclamation Facility expansion. Moving back to item number 12, authorized city manager to execute a contract for alternative transportation services with Savannah Downtown LLC Local, in amount not to exceed $598,797. The mobility and parking services will use the Savannah Downtown LLC to provide alternative transportation services between 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. within the greater downtown area, using vehicles provided by the company. Who pulled this one?
I did. I rescind it. Go ahead, sir.
All right. Is there a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the item on the agenda as written.
Second. Probably move the second at all, in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 15, authorized city manager to execute a contract for design services with Ethos Preservation, local DBE, in amount of $252,326. The services will be used to complete an investigation of the existing conditions and develop a detailed rehabilitation plan designs for the Springfield Terrace School, which is the Pearlie Smith School, and we're looking forward to seeing this happen. This is an old building built in 1926. Alderman Lanier.
You pulled it, but I had a
I'm sorry. Alderman Lanier, I'm sorry.
Yes, I was just wondering, when do we think we will be completed with this? Will this be the final phase? This $252,326 that we are spending for this, will this be the final phase for this particular project?
No, ma'am. This is the design. The construction will likely cost around $3 million, and that'll be coming to council.
I'm talking about the final phase for this particular business. That's the design phase. Will we be paying them more than $252,326
I don't believe
in the future? Will this be, this will take care of everything for this particular business?
That's our, that's our intention, yes, ma'am.
For design.
We've got, and then we've got the development and the construction dollars that will be, that we'll do procurements for and ask council to secure those contracts as well.
You're talking about contract modifications?
Right, that's what I'm talking about. Okay.
We'll keep a close eye on that, obviously, but we hope that in the spring of 2027, that construction on this project would be completed.
Thank you. I'm glad to see that it is a DBE business. Thank you.
Local as well.
Thank you. Alderman Lanier.
Thank you. I had a similar question. It was about timeline, and because when Brett was here, we were communicating on this project, and I haven't had any conversations on it and the status and where we are right now. And along that line, I just completed most of my rounds of community meetings for the month, so I got to see a lot of residents. I think I just completed six meetings, plus Savannah GPS and all, so. And they're saying the same things. They're asking these questions, the status of the timeline on these projects, they're asking about drainage. I was able to share about the grant and what's happening at the Springfield Canal right now, but there are more questions, I believe, than answers that I was able to provide. The slow progress on water is the Adams sign, the neighborhood signs, traffic calming. And the question is, or the cry is, we're just not seeing any activity on all these projects we've been talking about for a few years. projects we've been talking about for a few years. And when we're talking about Pearl Smith right here, that was one I was getting questions on. I'm learning here today where we are as far as 2020, 2027, but I didn't have that information, so I just need to sit down and find out about what's going on with these projects.
We'll make sure that Luciana and Joe get with you on the latest. This was something that we discussed at the budget retreat as well, as we've outlaid some capital dollars in '25 for this, and certainly want to make sure that we're providing all the information, because I think we do have some good updates for you to be able to share with your community leaders on-
I'd like to see yours, thank you very much.
On this project as well as others. Yes, ma'am.
Also, as we continue, there are also opportunities that I'm personally still pursuing regarding philanthropic opportunities to help to cover some of the costs of this that will either be allows of value enhancement or to help deduct the costs that council would have to approve for, so stay tuned about that. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for design services with Ethos Preservation, a local DBE, in the amount of $252,326. Second motion.
Probably moved in seconded, that we approve said item, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number 17, I thought we did item 17 at our last meeting. We didn't? Okay, this is a resolution confirming my emergency declaration of January 21st. If all of y'all remember, we kind of was, had some snow issues and ice issues. So I'm asking for you all to approve that. And then item number 18, state provides one Sunday a year in which we can authorize the sale of alcohol beverages on premises, and so since St. Patrick's Day falls on a Monday, the day that has been requested is Sunday, March 16th. Obviously, a big weekend for us, so I'm asking for approval of both of those items.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to approve the item, agenda items 17 and 18 as written.
Second.
Probably moved in seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay. I got a question before I can vote, sir.
Okay, well, which one, which one you're voting against?
I wanted to vote against the Sunday sales. I had a question before I voted. That's why I was calling, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so what we could do, we could break them up. So item number 17, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes, and we're reflecting item number 18 to reflect a no vote for Alderman Leggett?
Number 18.
Right, 18.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item passes, item eight to one. All right? All right, thank you. Moving to item number 19.
I have an explanation too, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, sir. I just, I wanted to put it on the record, that's why I was trying to catch you before we did the vote.
I mean-
I mean, I have an explanation. I just wanted, the reason why I'm actually voting it down, I just wanted to abstain from the vote because I wanted to make sure that we were, we had all of our ducks in the row when it came to our ABC unit and enforcement for those days when we're going to be having alcohol on Sundays. And you know, we've been asking and the public has been on me real hard about enforcement with our bars and taverns and our safe spaces, but we, the city manager and I have had an extensive conversation about it, but I want to definitely go on the record again and say that I really can't support it unless we have a mechanism in place that's going to have an enforcement piece for all of our bars, and we have all these people coming in town to celebrate, but we want to make sure that they leave here safe. As you said about Orange Crush, we want them to come here, have a good time, and also go home, but the way that they came here, we want them to go home in a safe capacity.
Okay, thank you. Well, point taken, motion passes eight to one. Item number 19, authorized city manager accept a Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, FY 2025 Rapid Response Grant Award in amount of $70,000. Item-
20.
Item number 20 is authorized city manager to accept the second allocation of the FY 2025 Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act Grant Awards for adult $660,066 of dislocated worker, 1,517,993 programs. These awards will be used to provide programs from October 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2026 to adults who are unemployed, underemployed, and adults who have been laid off from their jobs. As many of you all know, the city is a fiduciary agent for the 10 county region. Item number 21, it's approval of transfer of ownership from Gulfstream Park Place LLC to G P S S Gulfstream Owner LLC to enter an agreement with the City of Savannah, provide water and sewer services for development at 116 Gulfstream Road, which consists of two modular office trailers and a container storage area in Aldermanic District 1.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the agenda items as written.
Second motion.
Probably moved in seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number 22, 23, and 24 are settlements from the city attorney's office.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Item number 22, move to authorize the city attorney's office to settle the claim of man win of $450,000. Item number 23, move to authorize the city attorney's office to settle the claim of Linda Robinson for $55,000. And item number 25, move to authorize the city attorney's office to settle the claim of Charlotte Wright for $54,500.
Second.
Thank you. Item number 22, to move to authorize the city attorney's office to settle the claims of men win for $450,000. Item number 23, I've moved authorized the city attorney's office to settle the claims of Linda Robinson for $55,000. And item number 25, actually, that would be 24. Move to authorize, settle, authorized the city attorney's office to settle the claims of Charles Senna Wright for $54,500. It's been probably moved and seconded. We thank city attorney's office, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, that ends our agenda, but stay tuned, we're not finished yet. If you stay around, at 4:00, at 4:30, we will have a workshop dealing with our public safety and what your city is doing to address public safety. And at 6 o'clock, we have another public hearing. If you want to stay around and let us know what you think about the HB 581. I do need a executive session for purposes of personnel. Do you have anything for exec? Yeah, I think you do. Litigation, Mr. Manager, you have anything? All right, so it'll be on personnel and litigation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just make a motion for us to be excused for executive session for the purpose of litigation.
Personnel.
And personnel.
Second.
And probably move the seconded, that we go into executive session for purposes of litigation and personnel. Before we recess, Alderman, Alderman Blakely?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to stress to our public to really, really take advantage of what Stevens Day Bill has to offer here, especially our elderly residents and homeowners. I found out a lot of them are really concerned and afraid to look into what Stevens Day has to offer, so please, take advantage of it. It is something that is really, really good for our community. Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we leave, I would like to say rest in peace to Mr. Horace Scandrick, lost his life, also to Mr. Kenner Smart. They both will be funeralized on Saturday. And special recognition to our fire department, Mr. Mayor. They helped me get a cat out of a tree. And they came out and the community is actually giving them applause. We also giving a shout out to J.E. Dunn Corporation, who gave $2,500 to the Boys and Girls Club in the 2nd District, and also special shots out, especially from me as a championship football coach, to see one of Savannah's own, Nolan Smith, become a Super Bowl champion.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
I wanted to ask, is there, were you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I wanted to ask, is there any way that we could give Nolan Smith and Wanyay, who played, Wanyay Morris, who played with the Chiefs here from Savannah? Could we give them a key to the city?
We're talking about appropriate recognitions. Our office has been contacted, many of you know of parades, they're looking for, we're looking for a sponsor of a parade or some type of event, as you know. All of our parades are sponsored by someone. Someone has to be in charge of that, so soon someone takes that on, but we've had a couple of folks calling, inquiring about that, particularly for Mr. Smith, who is the Super Bowl champion. Mr. Morris was-
And the West Side Whippers.
Was born in Savannah, but as I understand it, even on his, on his bio page, it's got Savannah on there, so, but-
Well, that's all right. He was, he's here from here. He's still ours.
Oh, of course, but we, you know, again, we'll-
He's a West Side Whippers, so I can fast forward. He is a West Side Whippers.
Again, we'll, we'll wait till we make appropriate contact, and then we'll announce what we're going to do.
All right, so somebody has to sponsor the parade.
Yes, Savannah, and I need to make sure we're clear about that. Savannah's a whole parade.
Right.
Someone has to sponsor.
So that's, we're asking somebody, public?
Well, no, 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 ma'am.
We need a sponsor, okay?
Ma'am, people have already reached out about, about that, and so-
That's what I thought you said, you had people to reach out to.
Right, well, you're right, they're kind of asking how that happens and what that process entails.
Right, so-
So we've directed them to special events, and there's a process, right.
Right, you said they, they need a sponsor, so I'm saying, we need a sponsor.
Well, I think we already have one. Again, I think they just have to go through the process-
Okay.
-to make sure that the i's are crossed and the t's are dotted. If you notice, the attorney is looking very nervous right now for that reason. Somebody has to be responsible.
He ain't nervous.
Right. All right, so we're going to move, all, yes, ma'am?
I have some announcements, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to make sure that we give condolences again to the Elizabeth Catherine Prior Jackson. She was funeralized on Monday, an avid educator and a civic leader. Also, Carla Peterson of Gals and myself, we're doing a Valentine's party for the children of Savannah Gardens, and at the park, shouts out to Roger Moss, school superintendent, to the mayor, Chatham County Elections Board, and the Georgia Historical Society. They had an awesome event while most of the children showed up. And I also, we neglected to thank Chief, Air Hall Department showed up for all of the districts, city manager, mayor, Daphne, your staff, for the G P S survey. It was amazing. Thank you so much for what you do. We want to continue to keep focusing on our listening public, who ultimately is their voice, and thank you all so much. Great job. Every department was there, and thank you. Third district was the best. I want y'all to know, we had an awesome evening.
You didn't go to the other, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
I also want to congratulate the city manager and your staff on the work you all did last week. It was a lot, and you all pulled it off, and you did a great job, so thank you all for[1751.83]